Order, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Present.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McCosker is absent. Ms. Young?
Here.
But I'm sure you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the agenda with the following amendment. I ask that we move consent items in Section 9 to after agenda approval, and also to move Number 5, awards and recognitions, to right after the consent items, so they would be numbered 4 and 5.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the consent items. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent, second.
Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And, Dr. Kizner, do you have any announcements?
Okay, I'm very excited to introduce some of our new leaders. Many of them are already in our school system in different roles. So when I call you, if you're here, and you come with your, and you came with your family, please move up. Michael Armbo. Okay, very good. Okay, I'm gonna read something about him. Michael will assume the position of Principal of Rodney Thompson Middle School. He has spent the last four years. (laughter) I don't have any more than, he has spent the last four years as Assistant Principal at Thompson. Previously, he taught middle school social studies for nine years in King George Public Schools. He has done a lot, just for time purposes. He's been a real innovative leader. He earned his Bachelor's of Science and Master's Education degree, and Secondary Social Studies and Adolescent Education from State University of New York at Cortland. His Educational Specialist degree in Ed Leadership from Regent University. Okay, is Mr. Batke here? Okay, thank you. Mr. Andrew Batke will assume the position of Principal of Dixon Smith Middle School. He has served in the division for the last 23 years. Three years as a 5th grade teacher at Windy Creek Elementary School, four years as an 8th grade social studies teacher, eight years as Assistant Principal of Rodney Thompson Middle School, and the last seven years as Assistant Principal at Stafford High School. Prior to coming to Stafford, he was the elementary school in Texas as a preschool kindergarten teacher, which I absolutely love to see a man doing that, so.[219.15][219.15](laughter) He also has accomplished a lot of things, but I'm just gonna get right to the degrees. He has earned a Bachelor's of Art degrees in elementary ed from the University of Missouri Kansas City, and a Master's of Education degree in ed leadership from George Mason University. Ms. Karen Bingham?
There are three missing.
Ms. Karen Bingham will assume the position of Principal at Wide Water Elementary School. Ms. Bingham has been a Stafford County educator for the last 24 years. She was an elementary music specialist for 15 years, and Assistant Principal for the last nine years. She was an Assistant Principal at Rock Hill Elementary School, Conway Elementary, and most recently at North Star Early Child Ed Center. Again, she has great accomplishments. Ms. Bingham earned a Bachelor's of Music degree in music education from JMU, a Master's of Arts degree in music education from George Mason University, and an endorsement and administration and supervision from the University of Mary Washington. Okay, Mr. Roberts, Timothy Roberts? I love when they bring their family. Proud dad. And he has daughters. I got special for father, of course.[324.11][324.11](laughter) Okay, Mr. Timothy Roberts will assume the position of Principal at Brookpoint High School. Mr. Roberts has been Assistant Principal at Brookpoint since 2012. He was also the school's principal intern for four years, and was a special education and resource teacher for six years. Again, he has great accomplishments. Mr. Roberts earned a Bachelor's of Arts degree in political science and a Master's of Education degree with an endorsement in special education for Mary Washington College. He completed a certificate of completion in ed leadership from the University of Mary Washington. I hope she's here. Ms. Stephanie Sanders? Yes. Ms. Stephanie Sanders will assume the position of Principal at Stafford Elementary School. Ms. Sanders joins us from Prince William County Public Schools with 20 years of experience, three years as an Assistant Principal, six years as a teacher, and most recently 12 years as a Principal of Lake Ridge Elementary School. She is-
Lake Ridge? Oops, sorry.[403.52][403.52](laughter)
She also has great, a lot of accomplishments. She also has a child at Stafford Elementary School. She's a resident of Stafford. Ms. Sanders earned a Bachelor's of Arts degree in English Literature from Mary Washington College, and a Master's of Education degree in ed leadership from George Mason University. Welcome and congratulations.[425.27][425.27](applause) Okay, Mr. Brian Rasker? Another one with a daughter.
Oh, my goodness. Three.
All right. Very nice. Okay, Mr. Brian Rasker will assume the position of Principal at Hartwood Elementary School. Mr. Rasker has spent the last four years as Assistant Principal in the district. He served three years at Stafford Elementary School, and the last year at Anthony Burns Elementary. Prior to joining us in Stafford, he served in Prince William County Public Schools as an administrative intern and elementary physical education specialist. Mr. Rasker also taught adaptive PE in Arlington County Public Schools. He has earned his Bachelor's degree, Bachelor's of Science degree in kinesiology from Longwood University, a Master's of Education degree from the University of Virginia, and a Master's of Education degree in ed leadership from George Mason University. I see Roxanna McCarthy coming? Come on down. Ms. Roxanna McCarthy will assume the position of Director of Equity and Accountability. Ms. McCarthy has been the district's federal grants and program specialist since 2016. Prior to her current role, she served as the ESOL and World Language Coordinator for three years, and a Spanish teacher, department chair at Mountain View High School for six years. Ms. McCarthy also taught Spanish at Holy Cross Academy for eight years. She has earned her Bachelor's of Arts degree in political science from Barry University, and a Master's of Education degree in Spanish and ESOL from the University of Mary Washington. She is currently enrolled in the Master's of Education Program of Ed Leadership Administration and Supervision at the College of William &amp; Mary. Is Patrick Barnett here? Yes. Here, I may just read the whole thing.[568.79][568.79](laughter) Because he'll be noodles. Mr. Patrick Barnett will assume the position of Executive Director of Human Resources. For the past year, Mr. Barnett has served as the Deputy Chief of Talent Acquisition and Retention for the District of Columbia Public Schools. Previously, he spent seven years with the New Teacher Project, where he served in various roles, including Client Team Partner, Director of New Teacher Policy, and Performance Management Director. He's also practiced law for four years. With DC Public Schools, Mr. Barnett redesigned the school leader recruitment and selection process, and advocated for and secured policies to remove unnecessary barriers to recruitment and hiring. With the New Teacher Project, he designed and executed over 50 professional development sessions on model evaluation policies and practices for school leaders and teachers, and provided public schools in Baltimore, DC, and Indianapolis with over 200 effective new teachers over three-year period via the Teachers Fellow Program in each city. He earned a Bachelor's of Science in Foreign Services degree from Georgetown University, a Master's of Public Policy degree from Duke University, and a law degree from the University of Virginia. Welcome, and thanks for being here.[649.02][649.02](applause) I just wanna make one last announcement. I'm not sure if she's here. Is Abby here? Abby Martinez? No, okay. Well, she's not here. All right, so I just wanna announce, which I know the board knows, Ms. Martinez will now assume the role as the Assistant Principal at North Star Early Learning Chartered Center. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kizner. That brings us to awards. We'd like to recognize Mr. Greg Markheim, Athletic Director at Mountain View High School, for presentation of awards.[692.95][692.95](applause)
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. It is my honor and privilege to congratulate and recognize the Mountain View softball team as the state runner-up for the 2019 softball season. Coaches and players, please come forward as I call your name. Audiences, please hold your applause till the end. Head Coach Brianna Warley.[719.66][719.66](applause) Assistant coaches Dennis Romine and Megan Smith. The team members are Ally Quaylar, Kaylee Everhart, Caroline Pollak, Laney Fritz, Tegan Levek, Mackenzie Kushner, Phoebe O'Kelly, Felicia Preston, Annalise Franklin, Annalise Pudimont, Jesse Cantor, Harley Preston, Kirsty Banghart, and Kayla Gale. The hard work and perseverance of the team allowed them to achieve new heights. They are the first softball team to play in the state finals for Mountain View High School history, and the second team in Stafford County history. Throughout the season, they compiled an impressive 19-3 record, and they won the 5D Regional Championship while also receiving numerous awards, among those including Regional Player and Coach of the Year, and All Area Coach and Player of the Year as well. At this time again, we'd like to congratulate the Mountain View softball team.[804.16][804.16](applause)
The girls did great, I was there.
We'd next like to recognize- Mr. Christopher Dodd, Athletic Director at Stafford High School, for presentation
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. It is my pleasure that I introduce to you the Stafford High School varsity baseball team, which won the Class V VHSL State Championship 4-3 over Mills Godwin. In addition to the state championship, the team was the regular season Commonwealth District Champion, the Commonwealth District Tournament Championship, and the Region 5D Tournament Champion and Region 5D Champion. The overall record for the season was 24 wins and three losses. This is an incredible achievement, as they are the first baseball team in Stafford County history to win a state championship. Please, when I call your name, will you come forward? Audience, will you please hold your applause? We were led by Head Coach Mr. Tommy Harrison. Assistant coaches Scott Coleman, Assistant Coach Matt Bomke, Assistant Coach Mike Hill, and Assistant Coach Chris Clifford. Team members were Mike Tolson, Tristan McAllister, Jimmy Baker, Jake Flynn, Nate Henry, Caleb McAllister, Eric Romali, Tucker Sullivan, Cash Jordan, Joel Tolson, Grant Fuller, Logan Steigerwald, Eliza Lambros, Robbie Baker, Sam Wheeler, Dawson McCoy, Gunther Brendel, and Hunter Usler.
All right, now you guys gotta squat like the girls did. Get that picture.
You've been taking lots of pictures. You know how to do this one now.
Or you can put the taller ones in the back.[964.45][964.45](laughter)
The team motto this year was Pride Team Indians, and during the season, they made our community proud by the way they conduct themselves, not only on the baseball field, but on the classroom and in the community. They are true definition of team. Not one, but all team members contribute to success, their success all season long. Congratulations and a job well done, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Thank you, girls.
Congratulations to all our athletes and their coaches. And their athletic directors. Congratulations, that's really exciting.
At least I think it's funny.[1065.11][1065.11](laughter)
Yeah. All right, when the room is cleared from our awardees, we're gonna start the special presentations with the year-end report from the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee.
This is from Lori.
We'll wait till they're out. We can- Volume will be reduced.
Yeah. And the girls were one game away.
I think they watched the first one. My family, they were so proud of me, and then they're like, "Oh my God, did you sign up to do this?"
I said, "Be a little glory for her," 'cause she advised me. Not that I drink wine.[1166.02][1166.02](laughter)
They'll get those. I said, "They'll get those rings." They're pretty impressive rings, actually. Okay, I think we're, I think we're ready. Oh, that was the last one.
That's the gifted, excuse me.
It's the one above, yeah.
It's a PDF, okay.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Sure.
This is not a slide, it's a PDF, okay?
Well, we'll make do.
Okay.
That was the best seat in the house, that's what-
Absolutely was.
That's fine.
I don't know whose idea was that.
All right, we're ready. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Kizner. My name is Adam Holmes. I'm back again. I'm the Chairman of the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee, and on behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share our report for the 2018-19 school year. This evening, I'm gonna share student enrollment and demographic data, recognize some of our students' incredible individual achievements, and celebrate the impact of our school's arts programs on our community. The Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee is comprised of students, parents, teachers, and community members. We do have a couple of members in the audience. At this time, I'd like to ask them to stand to recognize for their work with us this year. Thank you.[1293.24][1293.24](applause) I'd especially, I'd especially like to express our gratitude to our liaisons, to the School Board Administration, Ms. Holly Hazard and Ms. Anne Marie Valino. Both have been indispensable resources as the committee has conducted its business. This is the mission of the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee, to ensure that high-quality, equitable, and consistent arts education programs are provided and maintained for our students. We take pride that any child who wants to explore the arts in Stafford County Public Schools will not be turned away because maybe they can't afford an instrument rental or a method book. We find a way. We must continue to improve access to these programs and provide our students and teachers in each school across the district with the tools and the facilities they need to realize the promise of our mission. No student should be short-changed in their arts education simply because of what street they live on. Now, our committee would like to express our sincere gratitude to you for passing a budget that shows a commitment to improving access to the arts and valuing the labor of our teachers and staff. The budget will fund a new pilot program that will bring exciting new after-school opportunities in dance and drama to elementary students across the district. It provides full funding for one entire grade level to attend a performance at the Riverside Center, including transportation, as part of the elementary curriculum. It contains funds that will partially defray fees for students who earn a spot to represent our community at all district, regional, and state events. The budget begins to correct teacher and staff compensation, and also helps satisfy staffing needs in our middle and high school strings programs. We thank you so much for each of these steps forward, and for demonstrating your commitment to our arts programs. And this support is critical, because as you can see, our arts programs continue to grow and generate increased excitement year over year. Our middle school arts enrollment has grown 9% just since the end of 2017, and we see even bigger increase in high school enrollment from the end of 2016 to today. That's a 10 and 1/2% jump. Naturally, we can expect those numbers to further increase as more and more middle school artists, musicians, and actors feed into our high schools. This year, over 48% of our student population at the secondary level enrolled in an arts course, and combined with our elementary students, over 24,500 students received arts instruction this school year. That's 84.5% of the entire student population. Now, this data shows that our kids want to express themselves in a personal and meaningful way. Our students learn to collaborate, explore, and create in our classrooms. High-quality arts instruction provides a direct connection to workplace readiness skills such as perseverance, focus, and collaboration. Student engagement in arts classrooms and research has, research has shown us that there is a positive correlation between high student engagement and graduation rate. Stafford County kids want to participate in the arts, and we are grateful that this board recognizes and funds opportunities for students to do so. Now, part of ensuring access to a great arts education is verifying that these programs are providing opportunities for everyone. This graphic illustrates the demographic makeup of our high school arts programs for the 2018-19 school year. These concentric rings help us visualize and appreciate the picture of the whole while being able to examine and understand schools individually. Now, in examining this graphic, I'd like to first remind you that the size of each ring is not indicative of total arts enrollment. Stafford senior on the outside ring doesn't have three times as many arts students as Brookpoint does on the inside, for example. But from that big picture, looking at all the rings together, we can see that our arts programs are composed of a diverse group of students. All in all, about half are white, which is represented by the dark blue, and there are 19 are Hispanic, which is yellow, 18% are black or African-American, which is silver, 8% identify as two or more races in the green, 3% are Asian, orange, and less than 1% each are American Indian or Alaska Native, or Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander. Students enrolled in Fine and Performing Arts classes are closely representative of the demographics that exist in our school division. This gives us confidence that we are making good progress in ensuring our arts programs are accessible to everyone. Our arts classrooms, as a whole, look like Stafford County, and we want to celebrate that. Our arts students accomplish so very much. We're so proud of the accomplishments of our students and teachers this year. We never have enough time to list every accomplishment with you, but among the highlights, we had two all-national music participants, 54 all-state music participants, 10 all-regional orchestra, 321 all-district music participants, three Virginia honor bands, three Blue Ribbon Schools, and our own state champion, the Stafford High School One Act Play Team. Those are just some of the 2018-19 highlights. Other highlights include a couple of residencies with the Mary Baldwin Players and the Siskiho University Wind Ensemble. The VCU Jazz came up for residency at North Stafford. Stafford County Public Schools Orchestra students, field trip to Fairfax Symphony Orchestra. Of course, the Mountain View Chorus being invited to sing at the White House. We had our first annual all-county guitar ensemble, and a grant awarded for elementary music professional learning. One of my favorite parts of the year is the Fine Arts Festival. The Fine Arts Festival showcases the artistry and performances of our talented students and the extraordinary leadership and instruction of our incredible fine arts teachers. On March 30th and 31st, over 10,000 patrons visited Brookpoint High School to enjoy the creations of over 5,000 student artists. Patrons were also treated to over 130 entries in the Recycled Art Contest, and the festival served as a debut for our first annual all-county guitar ensemble, which I mentioned just a moment ago. Now, all these accomplishments are just a few of the reasons Stafford earned the honor of being named one of the 2019 Best Communities for Music Education. This honor is awarded by the NAMM Foundation in National Recognition of Stafford County Schools' outstanding support and commitment to music education and our efforts to assure access to music for all students as part of a well-rounded education. Now, this award should come as no surprise, though. Our students and teachers make Stafford County a great community for the arts and for all of us every day. This past fall, band together shattered their 2017 totals and collected over 43,000 meals to help fight hunger in our community. Our different arts programs had performances at nursing homes and hospitals. There were the Riverside Awards for Excellence in High School Musical Theater, our combined marching band at Christmas, the Chad and Manor Performances, the Student Art Show at Hildrup Moving, and the Singers at the Memorial Day Ceremony at the Government Center. As we look to improve the quality and parity of our arts programs, the committee has a few recommendations. I'm gonna go out of order for a moment with this slide, and start with the third point. The committee recommends additional staffing for programs with over 200 students, reducing the crushing demands on these teachers and improving the quality of education for affected students. Under that point, the final one, we want to continue on our past successes of increasing access to divert arts programming with a renewed focus on dance and drama. Back at the top, our choral programs need contracted accompanists. Many teachers are often left to perform this duty themselves as they simultaneously listen, instruct, correct, and teach. Contracting accompanists for these programs gives everyone more freedom to create music and perfect their craft. This year, the committee invited choral directors to our meetings to discuss how to develop a program that meets our teachers' and students' needs. We also studied how other districts auditioned and evaluated potential accompanists, as well as how they're compensated. We also studied how other districts auditioned and evaluated potential accompanists, as well as how they're compensated. And finally, I, I've spoken a lot this evening about parity and ensuring all of our students at all of our schools have access to the same high-quality arts education, and with so many competing priorities for capital improvements, aging infrastructure, and shifting enrollment populations, it can be difficult to pinpoint where the funds are most needed. However, as in years past, the committee recommends that the board carefully consider the state of North Stafford High School's facilities. North Stafford is still the only high school without an appropriate theater arts classroom space, without two theater arts teachers, and without three large music ensemble spaces. As the committee prepares its updated education specifications for the anticipated High School Six, we want to be sure that our existing high schools are meeting the same standards for our new facilities. That concludes our presentation, I want to thank you all for your time, and that finishes our report.
Thank you, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Comment, Ms. Young.
Yeah. Trying to understand your graph. That you have, what's it called?
Which graph?
Diversity in the arts?
Yes.
So, the numbers, I, I think you mentioned sixty percent white. And so, this number here is just based on the individuals that are actually enrolled in arts, right?
This is a depiction of the arts student demographics, the number is actually closer to about fifty percent, maybe fifty-one percent.
So, you really don't have the number that says, okay, because there are sixty percent white students in Stafford, that there may be like twenty percent in arts versus, for example, the gray that is black or African-American students? You don't know what the number of population is? So, you, you have this here that says these are black or African-American, but you don't know what percentage it is of the black population, right? That's missing here?
I know, we, we have numbers, I don't know if I have them readily available, they're on my phone. I have percentages and raw data for each individual school.
Got it, okay.
As well as the general population proportions.
Got it, okay, I would, I would love to see that, because on.
Some of, some of these figures may answer those questions, I have the raw data for high school Fine and Performing Arts demographics totals, breakdown by discipline, the same data for middle schools, and then the totals for middle school versus high school.
I would love to see that, and then the other question, it's kind of connected to that question, it says here, maybe I misunderstood what's written here, increasing access to diverse arts programming, dance and drama in particular, what you meant when you say diverse arts, are you talking about arts for diverse, as in diversity, or just different? Do you mean just different arts?
In, in that context.
Are you talking about the ones that would attract?
When we're talking about dance and theater, those are two areas that we feel like we can do more on, yes.
I, I thought that's what you meant, but I just wanted to make sure.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Of course, I'd be happy to answer any question along those lines, yeah.
So, have you put a survey out to, to figure out, like, you put a survey out to find out if that's what they were interested in? Dance and drama in particular?
We currently have a, a survey out to students that we're still crunching the numbers on, that went out this past year. We're still analyzing that data in order to figure out how we can improve access to the existing art programs, where we have needs that we're not necessarily fulfilling, what students would like to see offered, including maybe trying to get at some of the reasons that they didn't stay with an arts class, or why they picked up an arts class, and finding out where our successes and our shortcomings are on each side of that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Howard University is right up the street, you could go there and figure things out and get some more analysis and research from them.
Terrific.
If any data you want to share with us, you can give to our clerk, you don't have to do it this evening, you can email it to her and then she'll provide it to all the board members and make it part of our record.
Okay, we have some spreadsheets that break down the demographic data that we created the, this diversity wheel.
Thank you, thank you for your work.
Thank you for a thorough report. The next item on the agenda is the year-end report from the Special Education Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Chairman Healy, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. My name is Keisha Evans, and I am the Chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee for the twenty-eighteen-twenty-nineteen school year. Ms. Martin Johnson, the Executive Director of Student Services, is unable to be here tonight due to the scheduled vacation, so sorry for that. Tonight, I will be presenting solid recommendations to the School Board based on our committee meetings through the school year. The CAC met six times this school year, we had eighteen new members and seven returning members. We quickly focused on two key areas for students with disabilities, academic needs, and social, emotional, and behavioral supports. I have a strong interest in the area of collaborative classes and asked the CAC to focus time on improving the ratios of general education peers to those with IEPs and the Section 504 plans. Additionally, we wanted to focus on staffing to address the growth in mental health needs for all students. We were fortunate this year to also have a presentation from Drew Gorsham, a senior from Colonial Forge High School, who presented to the CAC on what it was like to be a twice-exceptional student, one with a disability and also being gifted with ADHD. Drew's presentation was phenomenal, and he did an amazing job. Lastly, we wanted to make sure we brought you solid recommendations that you can act on in the next school year and budget cycle, so let's get started. The CAC reviewed research based on recommendations from experts in the field of co-teaching and the collaborative service delivery models. As you can see, Marilyn Friend, Wendy Morawski, and Kathy Byrne have provided recommendations for the percentage of students with disabilities who should be in collaborative classes. Marilyn Friend and Wendy Morawski are pioneers in the area of co-teaching, and Kathy Burns with, with, works with T-TAC, Training and Technical Assistance, out of William &amp; Mary. Essentially, each section of a secondary co-taught class should have between twenty to forty percent of the class with disabilities. The CAC focused on the middle schools in math and English for the twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen school year to determine how many sections had a class composition over thirty-seven percent of IEPs and Section 504 plans. If you aren't familiar with the co-teaching model, let me take a minute to let you know that the majority of students with disabilities are served through this model. A true co-teaching model has two licensed teachers who share teaching, planning, and assessment of students for the full block and content of the class. One teacher is endorsed in the content, and the other teacher has an endorsement in special education. This allows for expertise in content and methodology. It also allows for the two teachers to differentiate instructional practices or provide instructional delivery in multiple ways. By co-planning, co-teaching, and co-assessing, the teachers are able to meet the individual academic, social, and emotional needs of the students in the classroom. This is not a new model in Stafford, but we must focus on the ratio of students in these classrooms in order to support teachers and to ensure students remain the focus with a balanced composition of students. The next two slides will show you the number of sections of math and English by grade that had over thirty-seven percent of IEPs and Section 504s. As you can see on this table, we have a lot of classes that have a zero, which means that there are no sections of English in those grades or schools with over thirty-seven percent of students with disabilities or Section 504 plans. We also see a lot of section, sections of ones and a handful of twos. These are two schools with, with, have, I'm sorry, these are two schools which have three sections in sixth grade of collaborative classes over thirty-seven percent. Student Services and the Middle School Supervisor will work with those schools to address any staffing needs, to determine if there was a large influx of sixth graders this year, or if classes can be leveled out for nineteen-twenty. If not, this may be an example of where we need additional co-teaching teams to get that percentage down so that we're not overloading teachers and we are able to meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of the students. This table represents middle school math. As you can tell, we have many more classes under the thirty-seven percent, which is great, and we have very few ones. There are some hotspots with classes over thirty-seven percent at three schools, and again, Student Services staff will be looking at those classes to see how they look for nineteen-twenty school year. But please note that this table does not include hybrid classes. Hybrid classes are those where students with disabilities are in collaborative classes for a majority of the time, but are then pulled into a self-contained setting. Not all schools utilize this model, as it is contingent on the severity of the student's disability and the needs that are identified in an IEP. As you can see, based on information from the CDC, mental health needs for children two to seventeen is staggering. Just the first bullet alone paints a picture of the need for the, for the country and our local school district. One in six children ages two to eight had a diagnosed mental, behavioral, or developmental disorder, and this is information from the CD, from the CDC, from three years ago. Nine point four percent have a diagnosis of ADHD, seven point four have a diagnosed behavior disorder, seven point one have a diagnosis of anxiety, and three point two have a diagnosis of depression. These children attend our schools and live in our community. As many of you are aware, many mental health, behavioral, and developmental disorders have a comorbity factor, meaning two chronic diagnoses occur at the same time. We need help support the increased mental health, behavioral, and developmental disorders. Within the Department of Student Services, the department has noted the following increases across grades K through twelve. Increased numbers of students with emotional disabilities, increased number of social skill classes, increased need for one-to-one counseling, increased referrals for the Student Education Committee due to anxiety and depression, and the increased request and the need for mental health and trauma-informed care and practices from school staffs and administrators. Best practices and research support the need to address the percentage of students with disabilities in Section 504 plans and collaborative classes. The CAC would like for the School Board to include co-taught classes in the staffing standards when it is revised. The Staffing Standards Plan was due for revision in March twenty-eighteen, so it is the CAC's hope that once it is revised, the following recommendations will be included, or that the School Board will support the recommendations outside of the adopted staffing standards. We have set out a three-year path to decrease the ratios from thirty-seven percent to thirty-five percent to thirty-three percent as recommended by research. The CAC believes this meets what is the recommended in the research and will help teachers meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of the students. Please remember that the other sixty-three percent of the students who are general education students may also have a risk needs or behaviors. The CAC wants to extend the recommendations for the nineteen-twenty year with a deep dive into element, elementary data. As you see, best practices and research support the needs to address the percentage of students with disabilities and Section 504 plans and collaborative classes. The CAC would like for the School Board, I'm sorry, did I just read, yeah, I did, I apologize. The CAC voted unanimously in May twenty-nineteen on all recommendations to the School Board. We believe these recommendations are needed to support the academic, social, and emotional needs of all students. We respectfully ask the School Board to support these requests so that Student Services can move beyond meeting the minimal staffing standards. Thank you, any questions?
Madam Chair, I might.
Ms. Ian.
Thank you very much for that, this is, this is a hot button issue for me.
Yes.
I'm a five oh four mom and an IEP mom. And I would really like to make sure that we have a copy of this presentation sitting next to us as we venture into the next, next budget cycle. I don't know if, if you were here when we were having budget discussions, one of the things that I had, was pushing for was stipends for teachers who are managing IEPs and 504s. Unfortunately, I didn't have the support, and we didn't have the money for it, but I was wondering if you guys had that conversation? Have you ever talked about supporting a stipend for our teachers who do 504s?
So, we did not, we did not talk about that, but that is something in the next committee meeting, we would definitely.
That would be really helpful, because then that gives us a little bit more teeth to, to what we're trying to do with the budget, so.
Yes.
If you would keep that in mind as your approach next year, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, I just.
Question.
I just want to make a follow-up on Ms. Egan's, if you come up with a recommendation on that before the, you know, the end of the year, feel free to send it to the Board, because our budget literally has already started, but we get, you know, very involved, you know, with it as the, as we get closer to April. When we present it to the Board of Supervisors, so, you know, sometime early in the fall, if you have a recommendation, feel free to present it. So, Dr. Chase was next, and then Ms. Young.
So, I just had a, a question about sort of grouping IEPs and 504s and, and using that as just sort of a hard number because each student is an individual, and, and there may be students who say have 504s who really, you know, if you have a peanut allergy, that may not really affect your ability to do math in the math class or English or something like that, and so, really isn't going to increase the load on a teacher. So, did you all talk at all about that, or?
No, we did not talk about that, we can, you want to explain more?
Yeah, we just looked at the basic numbers of each of the classes and the number of 504s and IEPs in each of the, of the numbers that we received.
Right, so you didn't pull out whether there would be a educational load attached to that 504 for the teacher? I mean, in, in calculating your thirty-three or thirty-seven percent, so I was just curious, that's, that's okay, thank you.
No, but thank you for making that note, so we.
Ms. Young.
Yeah, my, my question was in reference to the recommendations when you have here, social workers plus five, was this before or after the budget, because we did approve social workers, so I wasn't sure.
We do have social, what happened here? Thirty, we have thirteen social workers.
Social workers, and so this, this five here is in addition to what we already have?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
But it's through the fiscal, you know, you see the different fiscal years, so fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
So, this twenty-two, is that plus five more, or is that, so that's ten, fourteen?
Right, it's plus five more.
By FY twenty-three?
Correct.
And what, what is this based on?
The research that we looked at. So, the, we took the recommendations from the, if you go back to Marilyn Friend, Wendy Morawski, and Kathy Byrne, we took that data, we took that research, and we came to our analysis.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you for a great report, we'll look forward to seeing you again.
Yes, thank you so much.
And then, Ms. Hall, you'll be sharing, well, we, we have this electronically, but we might want to have some.
They're supporting data.
Written copies for those of us who are the dinosaurs.
Yeah, but she has supporting data that's not in here.
Ms. Hazard and I, I guess, are the paper people.
No, but she has other supporting data.
Right, what I can do.
Yes.
Is make sure that we email you, and you can email the Board with the supporting data, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that brings us back to seven citizen comments. We have five people who signed up, I'm gonna. Oh, yeah, we'll get, we'll have our little blurb, thank you, Dr. Chase.
So.
We're being right along here.
Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the Board. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers, the chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number. particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the Board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the Chairwoman. Although the Board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy eleven thirteen, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. All right, we have five people who signed up, and when those people finish speaking, we'll invite anyone else who is here who wishes to address the Board. The first speaker is Lisa Lineweaver. The second is Miriam Ro-Rich. Rich, okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Lineweaver. Sorry, good evening, representatives. I'm a mother of three and a registered nurse. I also hold a master's in family nurse practicing. I'm here in regards to the newly proposed policies which would include sexual orientation and gender identity as a protected class. The Obama Guidance Letter on May twentieth, two thousand sixteen was simply an administrative issuance to Title IX institutions, twisting Title IX to not only apply to a physical trait but to a behavior, but it was never enacted into law. This Guidance Letter said that sex was to also be interpreted as sexual identity and that institutions that receive federal funding under Title IX were supposed to interpret the word sex in Title IX to mean gender identity. Title IX of the Civil Rights Act was to protect women and girls in the educational arena because women and girls had been discriminated against within the educational arena for so long. Hence feminists and other women fought very hard to get Title IX enacted into law in nineteen seventy-two, and it's specifically to protect women and girls. And it says in the educational arena, it says very specifically that there can be no discrimination based on sex. It specifically uses that word sex. Title IX accompanies some implementing regulations that say that even though the law prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex, it is appropriate for institutions that receive federal funding to have sex segregated spaces like bathrooms and locker rooms. So sex segregated spaces are specifically allowed under Title IX and its implementing regulations. Regarding the Guidance Letter, the Obama Administration did this with no notice or public comment. There was no opportunity for the public to respond, and what the Guidance would have effectively done is obliterated the regulations that allow for sex segregated spaces. Therefore, the Women's Liberation Front sued, they filed a lawsuit in New Mexico called the Women's Liberation Front versus the United States of America, and they were well-prepared to proceed with that lawsuit and essentially made two arguments. One, the Obama's administration's failure to get any public input into this change constituted a violation of the Administration's Procedures Act. Two, interpreting the word sex to mean gender identity for Title IX purposes was really, really bad for women and girls in institutions that received federal funding regarding privacy and safety. The current administration of the United States of America has withdrawn that guidance, so as a result of the withdrawal of that guidance, this case was dismissed. The case just became mute. If sex is construed to mean gender identity, what that means is that nearly all sex segregated spaces, bathrooms, locker rooms, showers, field trip overnight accommodations, colleges, sports, dormitories, and women's rights in general will utterly disappear. The Supreme Court recently refused to hear the Joel Doe versus Boyertown Area School District case where a group of students issued or sued the school for the right to privacy and safety in the girls' locker room bathroom area. Therefore, it is not possible to both enshrine gender identity in civil rights law and protect women and girls as a distinct legal category. Furthermore, the cross-sex hormones that this policy would suggest that we give to children in the name of gender identity causes sterility in both sexes, increased cardiovascular risk or thromboembolism in males, and polycythemia in females, or increased risk for blood clots, stroke, heart attack, and splenomegalya. Thank you.
If you'd like to submit your comments, our clerk will make them part of the record and share them with the Board. Thank you. All right, Ms. Rich. And following Ms. Rich is Josh Hetzler.
My name is Miriam Rich. I live in Stafford County. I come here as a mom, a concerned citizen, and a nurse. I am against the bathrooms being shared between girls and boys. Just as a moral issue, I, um, just being a woman myself, when I go to the bathroom and I go to fix things, I don't want a man standing next to me just while I'm doing that. Same thing, I just feel that we really have to have some common sense to what we're doing. We have to protect our kids and just let them know that we are practicing safe, that we're not putting them in a situation where they have to worry. Kids have enough things to worry about. I, I don't see the sense of it. So many things are being taught that it's medically, there's medical evidence, there is no medical evidence to many things that are being said with this issue. It is not a case of wanting to discriminate, as many might say. It is just a case of decency. I also, you hear so much about, you know, not wanting to discriminate. I come to you as a Hispanic American, and I take my citizenship very seriously. I want to be heard. I, I want to be active in my community. I want my kids to be responsible. I want my kids to be active citizens as well and speak up for others. They, as well, feel very uncomfortable about going to the bathroom. I, you know, as a mom, when they were really little, I would stand by the bathroom waiting for them to come out, making sure that nobody else would go in there. And so I don't see the reasoning why we are going to such uncommon sense. And like I've said lately, common sense is not so common anymore. So thank you for letting me speak.
Jeffrey Trigger will follow Mr. Hetzler.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Josh Hetzler. I'm the Legislative Council here on behalf of the Family Foundation of Virginia. We're located at seven oh seven East Franklin Street, Richmond. I want to associate my comments with the first two speakers and add just a little bit to that, in particular about the policy, both policies, twenty-four twenty and forty-one oh seven. And I generally want to warn this Board about the impacts of adopting these particular policies, and specifically with these terms, sexual orientation and gender identity. I believe that they implicate significant legal and constitutional concerns. For instance, the Supreme Court has well-established that students have a constitutional right in the schools, in public schools, to not just privacy but bodily privacy in the states of undress with respect to the opposite sex viewing them. That is absolutely a right that they have. There are free speech rights implicated here about use of pronouns, both for teachers and for students. Will students and teachers be compelled in this way to speak something which they don't believe to be true? Religious liberty falls along those same lines. There are many, many students of various faiths, Jewish, Christian, Muslim, who have a particular view about the nature of mankind. Their, their rights will certainly be implicated here. As a matter of state law, you may be familiar with the Dillon Rule, which is a longstanding rule that local governing bodies have no authority to go beyond what the state, what the General Assembly has already prescribed in the law. In this case, with nondiscrimination laws, sexual orientation and gender identity have not been placed in to the law. In addition to some of those reasons, this policy is quite vague. And I think it perhaps was intentionally left vague, I don't know, but it seems like there could have been much more specific there. But I, but I think that that is precisely the problem because we don't know how this could be interpreted or applied. What, and the, the main operative terms are not defined. For example, we may take for granted what these terms mean, but in fact, it's, it's not very clear. What is gender identity? How will that play out? These are things that the Board should really think about as far as this policy being constitutionally vague. So I've got a couple of seconds, so I want to skip down, and I want to encourage you to consider the story of Peter Vlaming, who is a high school French teacher in West Point High School, not far from here. And he was recently fired in December by his Board for simply not using pronouns at all. And I don't mean to say using pronouns that a student disagreed with. I mean, he simply said he wouldn't use pronouns and he was fired. So I want you to consider that.
If you'd like to submit your remarks, we'd be happy to put them in the record. All right, thank you. Mr. Trigger? And then after Mr. Trigger is Paul J. Waldowski.
I think I might be stealing Waldo's thunder tonight. I brought props, so, sorry, Waldo. My name's Jeffrey Trigger, and I live in the George Washington District. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the power of graphic literature. There is a vote yet again to pass another reading program. I'm not against technology. I'm reading this on a phone, so I just want to make sure everyone's clear of that. But I just want to be assured that when we're trying to reach our subgroup categories, we're not using this as a crutch, but we're using it as a tool. Last year, I used the love of my, I used the love of comic books, like the ones you see right here, and implemented them in my classroom. We used compare and contrast against traditional literature. I was able to create lessons and projects that crossed both the rigor and the engagement divides. Another thing about these comics, as you can see here, the characters here are young, they're African-American, they're Latinx, they're Asian, and many are women. Comics represent our students at a realistic and high level. The lowest Lexile in my hand is nine forty, which is higher than most of the VLC books that are given out to sixth grade. These comics and graphic novels gave me my best year by any metric you can use in seven years. That being said, it's also time for our policies to fully reflect our students and staff as well. Our population grows more diverse every year. Let's make sure it's not just my comic books that fully represent and protect Stafford County Public Schools. Thank you.
He has orange on.
Oh, man, long time no see. Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane. I was asked at the back earlier about who do I represent? Well, today I have to tell you until Election Day, I, Mr. Waldowski appointed me as the treasurer of the, of his campaign committee, which is called Paul Waldowski to Assess to Lower Taxes. And you'll see that, that every time I use an S, I use a dollar sign. And every time I use the word two, I use the number two. Now, one of the things that I want to make clear that differentiates me from all other people is I want to be the Commissioner of Revenue. I don't need the job. I'm a lifelong learner. And what I plan on doing is setting up two scholarships. One is academic, and one is sports. Because if it wasn't for sports, I would have never become as gifted as a lifelong learner. Because you learn more from sports, as we saw with those state champions, Stafford Indians, who I'm sure if I asked any of them, how many ways is there to get to first base? They would not know that the answer is twenty-three. Now, for academic, I have a preference. I'm a retired computer scientist. I believe mathematics is a international language, as is music. I loved listening to the Arts Advisory Committee. I always liked to make people aware that Broadway shows are the arts. Everyone's called an actor. There's no diversity, doesn't really matter, they're all actors. It's just like on active duty, we're all airmen. Or soldiers. Or like my father used to say, Marines. Now, for the sports side, well, Ricky Fowler wears the orange like I do every Sunday. Just wish he would win a major. So golf always interests me. Bob Twy used to hit golf balls, and I used to be awed at Oklahoma State watching him. Wrestling is big in Stafford County. Oklahoma State has the Wrestling Hall of Fame. We've been to the College World Series many times. That's why I'd like to have that Mountain View softball team. Go to OSU. Beware, we can't beat OU. And in football, we have T. Boone Pickens. He's the guy who is a billionaire billionaire. And guess what? He gives back, and he's one of my mentors to give back.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board? Please come forward. And when you finish, there's a sign-in sheet.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Kizner, my name is Christian Peabody. I'm the president of Stafford Education Association and the music teacher at Falmouth Elementary. And I just want to speak again towards the two policies up for revision regarding nondiscrimination. We don't have one in place. This is an incredible time that we could literally empower and uplift every educator and every student now and in the future in this division like never before. We need it, it's overdue, and the inclusivity of it is incredible as well. I mean, the sexual orientation, gender identification, but also even like the national origin. I myself, I'm a second-generation Hispanic, and I'm the first one in my family ever to go to college because of the teachers I worked with. We also know in SEA, we have lost a lot of staff because they felt that they didn't have protection against these discriminations. We've also had students speak out that they're worried because they don't have protections against these discriminations. But also, we don't have, because we don't have this initial step that's trying to get done, we don't have the trainings and implementations and the information that reflect the reality of how we can, um, train all of our staff and our students about what this exclusivity is. And nothing is actually exclusive about it. It embraces and empowers and uplifts everyone, no matter what their viewpoints. And also, I presented to the Board the last meeting, this is a, these are policies SE is fully behind. And your educators, I mean, almost ninety-two percent of them, they want to see this done for themselves and their students. So if there's anything else SEA can do to help with that, just please let me know. I thank you for your time.
My name is Dave Gent. I'm a teacher at AG Wright. Did not anticipate being here in the summertime, so I'm a little unprepared, bear with me. I hadn't actually planned on being here today. I heard the topic of discussion for the new policies were going to be up again, but it was just going to be kind of an easy meeting, but there was some concern that people might push for a vote early, so I wanted to be here in case things went in a different direction. And as I was listening, I heard something that couldn't help but catch my attention when the presentation was being given on the special ed programs in the county. They mentioned several times, and I wrote it down here, about the importance of looking after our students' academic, social, and emotional needs. And you guys are great listeners, you're active listeners. When you hear something you agree with, you nod, right? And everybody nodded along, nobody questioned it. Nobody stood up and told them to stay in their place and focus just on the teaching, like we get told when we're talking about these policies or when people come up against them. And I thought that was just a really interesting kind of parallel for the arguments we have here. Because I had an interesting experience lately that showed both sides of that. I went to the Pride Parade in DC a few weeks ago. I've been going every year for fourteen, fifteen years now. And during the parade, everybody was so happy. I see students there every year, and they're smiling, they're supported. For the first time in many of their young lives, they feel safe. But about two and a half hours into it, a fight broke out on Dupont Circle, and somebody pulled a gun. And within seconds, a hundred thousand people panicked and started running. And nobody felt safe anymore. It took zero time. And as we sat there convinced that there was a shooting, because we didn't know for about fifteen minutes why people were running and screaming, we just knew that they were and there was a gun involved. People talked about how scared they were. They talked about what they were going to do. There were people who took charge, people who went to help, but nobody talked about being surprised. Everybody believed that this was a realistic thing that could happen. The discomfort and fear that they'd lived with the whole time was just surface level because their emotional needs, their social needs were not being met. This was expected, that kind of hostility was expected. That's the dynamic we're trying to change with these policies. That's the dynamic we're trying to change with these policies. Now, people can come up and talk about morality issues. They can talk about religious concerns, they can talk about safety. People have given you the numbers and the statistics on who actually gets hurt in bathrooms enough times, I'm not going to repeat them. Who actually commits suicide enough times, I'm not going to give them to you again. If this is about looking out for those emotional needs, those social needs, for protecting kids, for doing the right thing, it becomes very obvious what decision you guys have to make. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, come back for Board reports. Are there any Board Committee reports? Dr. Chase?
So, uh, the Finance and Budget Committee met on June seventeenth. Uh, we received briefings on, one, the projected year-end savings and a prioritized list of projects that can be funded with some of those savings. Uh, two, proposed changes to the hybrid employee leave and caps. And three, the Energy Performance Contract and Lease. All three of these items are on the agenda, the first for action and the second two for information. Uh, members of the Fab were supportive of all three. Uh, we then discussed the Superintendent's Purchasing Authority, Policy Fifty-eight oh two. Chairwoman Healy suggested that we discuss this issue because the limit, which is seventy-five thousand, was set in two thousand eight and has not been changed since despite inflation. Uh, this came up recently when the Board had to be polled to approve a streetlight for the new Moncur because the cost was between seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the Finance and Budget Committee was in agreement that the limit should be raised and something should be coming to the Board for information and then action in the near future. And we talked about this already, and then, uh, finally, it is time to begin developing the School Board's budget priorities for next year. With that in mind, we requested a retreat with the entire Board in August. Please let Ms. Hall know about your availability as soon as possible, if you have not already done so. And our next meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, July, uh, June twenty-seventh at noon.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Is there a report from the Governance Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Egan.
Um, we were very overdue for a meeting, so it was necessary. Um, we talked a little bit about the employee code of conduct that we had discussed, um, last year and probably the year before. I believe, uh, Missy has pulled and has forwarded it to the Board. Uh, in turn, we would like to send it to Dr. Kizner for him to look at and to consider. We also talked about, um, something that you guys apparently have forwarded to the rest of the Board, asking about, uh, Superintendent, um, goal-setting and evaluation, so that was part of the conversation. Um, we talked about, uh, a by-law review. We haven't really, as a Board, looked at our own the gu- the, the document that governs this Board. So, we've asked Missy to send those out too. Um, and typically, what we would have done for the Governance Committee is we would have gone through this and, you know, kind of pulled out and brought back a recommendation of some sort, but we all agreed that this is something that the Board should do together. Um, and not make a recommendation that to, to might maybe include this in the retreat that you're suggesting for August. Uh, we'll maybe set some time. It'll be a little bit more than a half a day. Um, but I think it's important for us to kind of roll up our sleeves and get into these three items as a Board. Because I don't, I don't think, we didn't think it warranted a recommendation. It's a, this should, this should be a group think project. Um, so if we could add that to the retreat for August, um, we can tackle that and, and, uh, get her done.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. All right, um, that closes the Board reports. Superintendent comments, Dr. Kizner.
First, I must tell you, um,
I was getting there.
I thoroughly enjoyed and remarkably impressed with all the advisory committees that presented over the last couple of weeks. The professionalism and detail was excellent. I also must tell you this, now when you're in your first year, everything's a first. So, on the Teaching and Learning Summit, I, I, I applaud Jan and her department. It, it was very, very positive, let me just leave it at that. While that was going on for three days, two days, um, at Drew Middle School, I mean Gale Middle School, was, uh, middle school staff, over a hundred, um, were learning about RTI, um, practices, and I had a chance to participate for that, so that, so we, we had, I don't know, I'm gonna say about five hundred fifty, six hundred educators learning last week, which was very impressive. And then yesterday, um-
Dr. Kizner, for, um, those who may be listening, could you just tell us the, what RTI stands for?
Response to Intervention to Help, um, Tiered Support, so we target instruction to help the needs of children where they are currently. And then yesterday, and I give Carrie Neely, um, the victory, but, um, we had four schools. We had, um, Moncur, Hampton Oaks, um, uh, okay, don't-
Rockerun.
Rockerun, thank you so much.
Conway.
And Conway. This staff from all four schools, meeting at Conway to talk about the transition of students and families. And it was focusing on the positive things that they're proud of the school and students, so uh, I'm just going to tell you, 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 as you already know, we have great staff and great things are happening. And then, uh, Sheree and I had an opportunity, um, to visit Quantico, um, last week and meet with their senior leadership to talk about future partnerships and how we could help, um, in the area of transitioning when, when children come to us that have been moved around many, you know, many times. And we also spoke briefly, and we're going to have greater conversation about, um, having high school students maybe doing some internships and mentorships on, on the, um, on the base. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to action items. Ten point oh one, Appointment of School Board Members to Serve on the Board Standing Committees. We have three standing committees, and we're looking for appointing members for the upcoming fiscal year, which would be July first, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. First is Finance and Budget.
I would like to stay on the Finance and Budget.
And I would be happy to stay on as well.
Ms. Decatur?
I'm good to stay on it as well.
All right. How is the, is the- Well-
Can we do it on slate?
We do have to, um, to address the-
Gears, the-
Gears that, um, we, we do have a, um, what would that be called? A, a restriction on serving more than twen- twenty-four consecutive months or two consecutive terms. And, um, Ms. Young, you would be fine through December thirty-first, but you would need a, um, a waiver, I suppose, for January through June. For the, um, the amount of, um, time serving consecutively.
Can we address it then, or what?
I would like to address it now.
Well, we would have to amend the bylaws or suspend the bylaws.
No, the bylaws say that you can-
We can waive.
Vote at the Board.
We can, we can waive it. So, do we, um, do we want to have a motion for appointments to this committee?
I'll just express, um, some interest in serving in that, but I am not going to go through what we went through last time, so I will not. But I would suggest that at some point, we do have alternates to these committees because there are times when people can't and not, you know, there are just things that, that do come up. So, I, I mean, I'm not saying that I have, but I'm just saying, in general, I do think alternates, especially on having sat in the, uh, work session, we just sat through with a list of things that have to be done, especially through Fab. Um, there's going to be a lot of meetings, and, you know, we, we do have lives. I, I know we all dedicate a lot of our lives here, but there are times that there are conflicts, so it's just something to consider. Um, I think the elimination of alternates may not be a good, may not have been a good thing for us to have done.
And the only reason why I feel that, um, I should stay on the committee, at least all the way through, because we have two members, we have one or two members. You're one member that is, um, your time is up, you have to be re- Jamie, Ms. Decatur. Um, you will have to be reappointed, like, if you win your election. So then, at least there will be somebody.
Well, she wouldn't need to be reappointed. The appointment is for a year. If-
Right.
If one of us were not to come back that were on a committee, then the Board would just appoint somebody else.
Right, but I'm saying I will be the only one, just in case. There will be one person that been on the committee for a while.
Dr. Chase is, uh, planning on being here January first. Ms. Hazard, Dr. Chase, Missy, you're, you're good, you got a quorum.
No, we had McCosker, he was there before.
No, he won't be back. He's already told us.
I understand that, but he was the only one that was remained.
Right, and I, I'd like to, to, uh, agree with Ms. Hazard that it's probably a good idea to have an alternate as well. Um, but I will say, the three of us on the current committee, I can't think of any time that all of us haven't managed to be there, but it's absolutely possible that there could be a time that we wouldn't, so.
Well, I don't, I don't see a restriction on having an alternate, so, um, I, I certainly think that's a good suggestion, and we should perhaps, when we have a motion, include that, you know, in the motion. Was there any more discussion, or are we ready for a motion?
Um, I'd, I'd like to move that we, uh, appoint, uh, myself, Ms. Decatur, and Ms. Young to the Finance and Budget Committee for the next fiscal year, and that we, um, if, if she's willing to serve, appoint, uh, Ms. Hazard as an alternate.
Okay, and do you want to make part of that motion that we wa- waive the-
That, in order to, in order to do it for the entire fiscal year, that we would waive, um, for, for this, this fiscal year, uh, Ms. Young, to continue for the twelve months.
Do we just want one alternate, or do we need one more? Just one?
I think one's fine.
Okay.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think I just, I, I want to make sure I say it, because I always say the things that, um, people probably don't appreciate. I just, I want to remember this, um, and remember that we're all willing to work together and make exceptions for everybody, not just for somebody. Um, and, you know, that's great because we're a team, and I like being a team, but, um, I, I do recall when this was not acceptable for some, so I will support it, but I want us to remember this moving forward, that we should all work together. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we have another, uh, appointment, let me move back.
I would like to stay on Governance.
We're back, we don't meet, so.
It's a new day, team.
That's fine, I'm fine, we're staying.
Ms. Hazard, are you willing to continue serving on the Governance Committee? All right, do I hear a motion?
Do you need an alternate on that one? I don't think so.
All right, so I will move that, uh, Ms. Decatur, Ms. Egan, and Ms. Hazard continue on the Governance Committee, and that Ms. Young act as alternate.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're on a roll here. Legislative. Do we have any, uh, any, anyone that doesn't want to stay?
I, I would like to, to step down if there's somebody willing to take my place. Um, if not, I could wait until January, and maybe there will be somebody new who would be willing to take my place, but whatever, whatever works.
All right, do we have anyone that wants to be on, or Ms. Egan and Ms. Hazard, do you want to continue on that?
Yeah, sure.
Ms. Hazard, do you want to continue? All right, do we have any volunteers? I guess it's only you and me, Ms. Decatur.
And I would volunteer, but that would put the both, all three of us on both of the Governance and Legislative, and I'm sure some people-
Well, I think we ought to appoint Mr. McCosker in his absence.
Okay, I will, I will, I will-
Well, no, I'm only joking here, I don't think he'd appreciate it.
I will serve if, um, Ms., once, um, Dr. Chase steps down, I will.
All right, so I would move that, uh, Ms. Egan, Ms. Hazard, and Ms. Young serve on the Legislative Committee.
All right, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion, second. All in favor? Or any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, that motion passes as well. Now, the other committees are just listed here for informational purposes. We're not doing any appointments for, um, for those at, at this time.
Definitely for, for McCosker.
Right. That brings us to, uh, oh, all the way up to ten point oh two. Appointment, no, wait a minute, we're on ten point oh three, where are we? Ten point oh two. Oh, the Advisory Committees, all right, there's too many committees here. All right, does anyone want to, to, uh, switch committees?
I would like to, um, I know this is dear, near and dear to your heart, Trish, so if, if you'd rather stay on, that's fine, but-
Oh, you were going to Health.
Sp- well, no, Special Education, alternate.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. No, I thought, I've been on the Health Committee for a long time, and I enjoy it. Except this year, we had so many Monday meetings, it was hard.
Now, Jamie, that's if you don't want to be the lead on the Special Ed.
Oh, no, that, that works, that's perfectly fine, that's-
I-
Yes, Ms. Young.
I was alternate for County Parks and Rec, and I want to change and do something different.
Well, we're not doing that one tonight. Sorry.
That's no.
Wait, that, that was a one. This is a two.
I, I-
All right, Ms. Young, you're, you're the primary on CTE, and-
Technology. I, I was wondering if, if you would switch with me on Gifted, because I've been on that committee many, many years.
Where do you want to go? You want to go Tech?
I'll go Tech.
Okay, go Tech. Y'all gonna miss me? You gonna miss me? Yeah, okay. As long as you're gonna miss me.
All right, all right, so, uh, Ms., Ms. Hall, you're getting all this, right? Okay, so, Ms., Ms., uh- Ms. Young is going to be the primary on the Gifted, and Dr. Chase is going to be primary on Technology. All right, and then, um, let's see, where was that one that, and then Ms. Egan is going to be the alternate in Special Ed. Any other changes? Where's McCosker? He's, is Mr. McCosker?
He's an alternate.
Okay, that's all right. He's, he's, he's alternate in a lot of them. All right, is, is that acceptable to everyone? All right, do we have, we have a motion for what we just, uh, discussed?
Motion for what we just discussed.
You got that, Ms. Hall?
The slate as, as transcribed by-
Has changed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, next one's easy. Ten point oh three, Appointment of the Voting Delegate and Alternate Voting Delegate for the Virginia School Boards Association's Delegate Assembly at the Two Thousand Nineteen VSB Annual Convention. We had a volunteer for this voting delegate.
Okay.
And that was Ms. Young. Thank you, Ms. Young, for here, volunteering here.
You're so welcome.
So, is there anyone that is, uh, interested in being the backup?
Holly.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard.
Shouldn't that go hand in hand with the Legislative Committee, so, yeah, you need to be on it.
All right, another-
I, I move, so, shall I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Move that Ms. Young be appointed as our, uh, voting delegate, and that Ms. Hazard be the alternate voting delegate for the Virginia School Boards Association Delegate Assembly at the Two Thousand Nineteen VSB Annual Convention.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Another motion passes unanimously. Uh, next is ten point oh four, Approval of a Plan to Compensate Secondary Classroom Teachers Who Have More Than One Hundred Fifty Students And Secondary Physical Education and Music Teachers Who Have More Than Two Hundred Students.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Egan, we have a second by Dr. Chase. Discussion, Ms. Young?
Um, it, it is not about this, but I just wanted to know if we had, um, did we have some work to do with the CTE to see if we could do a stipend? I think I mentioned that before. And is it in the works that we do something for CTE?
I thought we were going to look at stipends, um, once we get into the year and see if any funding's available. It wasn't just CTE, there were some other areas as well.
There was a couple of others, but CTE comes to mind because that's my committee, but-
Yeah, that's something we would look at during the, um, budget cycle. So, we started that process last year, there, um, ended up having to reduce the funding for that, but, uh, we can look at it again for FY twenty-one.
I just want to make sure that it's at the top, right, and Dr. Chase is going to make sure.
Well, and, and while we're, while we're looking at stipends, um, can you also, uh, put on the list to look at the JROTC? Uh, instructors, because they spend countless hours, uh, you know, outside the classroom, you know, with their students, with, you know, either competitions or trainings and, and other kinds of things. I know we've, we've talked about other areas that we're looking at, and there's certainly a lot of well-deserved ones, but I think that's another one we need to start looking at.
CGS, do we need to look at those?
We added robotics this year, I think that was the only one we-
Correct.
We added, but hopefully next year, we'll be able to add, add more. We added robotics this year, I think that was the only one we added, but hopefully next year we'll be able to add more on there.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Ms. Hazard?
Just only one comment, the final line here, on here, and Chris, you don't have to get up, but it just said that we are currently identifying the compensation plan and potential funding sources for FY '20. I think my comment would just be, I think we have now recognized this, we need this to be part, going forward, of a base budget of some type, and I wouldn't be the good Advisory Committee member if I didn't note that the comments of the Fine Arts teachers of the over 200, of sometime either looking into staff support or something like that, so just had to give the plug.
You got a plug?
Well, ideally, our teachers would not have this extenuated workload, but to the extent that they do, it's only fair that we compensate them, so, thank you for coming up with this plan, Dr. Kizner. All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Egan, and a second by Dr. Chase. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 10.05, Award of a Delivery Order to Sunny Merriman, Inc. An Amount of $559,955 from FY '19, Annual Operating Funds for the Procurement of Five Special Needs Buses. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Young, do we have a second by Dr. Chase? Any discussion? Ms. Egan?
Do these buses have air conditioning?
Yes, I asked that, I asked your question. Every bus we buy now will have air conditioning. Okay, any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 10.06, Approval of Year-End Infrastructure Projects Listing Priority.
Motion to...
Wait a minute, is that...
Yeah, you're right.
Are we on the right ones? Okay.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Dr. Chase, and a second by Ms. Young. Any discussion?
I'm going to ask my question I asked last time, Chris, you knew it was coming. What do we anticipate for year-end savings, so we know how much we're buying?
How far down on the list do we go?
Green.
Yeah, we fully expect to be able to fund everything in the green, and so we'll start executing those tomorrow. And I'll give the same disclaimer I always do, that it does take us right up to the end of the year before we have an official number. Revenues look great compared to original budgets, so I'm not concerned much on the revenue side. The expenditure side is where we obviously track closely with payroll, and we were able to get some pretty good numbers, and we're ironing those out, but it's still in that 1% to 1.5%, so just on the payroll side, we'll have roughly about $3 million, what we're projecting right now. Now, we can't spend all of that $3 million, and there'll be a little bit on the operating side, too, but we're also working on moving some of the non-payroll operating money around to cover other areas, like fuel, we're running a little short in this year, so we're having to cover that. But the payroll side, you know, not to be repetitive, but we don't want to run that balance all the way down to zero, so there'll be a carryover, there's always going to be a carryover, we just got to try to balance that.
I have a quick question on the ones that don't have the original rank, are these brand-new, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They were items that came up as items of need during the year for replacement.
Okay.
If I could ask a follow-on question, I know we have our colors. When it says "not ready for FY '19 year-end," the only reason I'm asking that is there seem to be at least, and I'm taking the, what I would call the low-hanging fruit, cost items, if you, well, sorry, I have mine on piece of paper. Seeing that one, installing additional security lighting on the playground, since that's an outside activity, maybe that could be done in the fall. Upgrading a CTE lab of $37,000, also upgrading a library at Kate Waterbury at $52,000. So, I guess my main question is, does, it means that the bid probably could not be done this summer, or it can't be executed, and the only reason I'm asking is since these are lower numbers, should funds be available? I would suggest to the board, maybe, that we would move them into a list that they could be covered if there was a way to execute. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, and they're mainly not ready to be executed due to procurement, you know, so we have to follow a process, some of these have to be formally bid out, and it's usually not best practice to bid them out if you don't have the funding available, so we wouldn't want to bid them out, have vendors on standby, and then have to cancel the bid, because that hurts competitiveness later on. But, different this year than in prior years, is the Board of Supervisors has appropriated $1.445 million for items that we can try to attack on the 3R list. So, we'll finish our updated 3R list, taking the current list, looking at new needs, bring that to the Board for approval, and those are items that we're not going to have to wait to, until the end of the year to fund, so, because they've identified that money upfront as part of the process, that was dating back to last year, this is the first year in FY '20 that we'll have those funds available to us there.
So, July, I'm just trying to make sure I'm following this correctly. So, July 1, there'll be $1.4 million available for some of the 3R projects.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just backing off of what Ms. Hazard is saying, some of the stuff, because the school year is short this year, you're not going to be able to get through the summer, like, say for example, that replacement phone system for Hampton Oaks, that's not something you're going to be able to do.
Yeah, correct, so it doesn't, and I didn't mean to imply that we were going to do all these this summer, with that $1.445 million, but we will be able to start bidding them out and getting them ready to take forward. If they can be done during the school year, on a weekend or something, we'll look at that, but it'll be lined up for early next summer. With the school year ending early next year, at the end of May, we'll be able to get those rolling in June.
Yeah. Mr. Fulmer, that $1.44, is that just for school projects, or is that...
That is just school 3R projects, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Chris, real quick, I know that the last round, we had some conversation about the elevator at Stafford Middle School.
Uh-huh.
Did that ever get fixed?
It's on here, I think.
I believe it was a procurement issue on trying to iron that out and making sure we had the proper backup to move forward with that. I will check on the status of that. I know we were trying to get, like, the rider agreements and such taken care of, to move that forward. I don't think it was going to happen this summer, but I'll follow up on that.
Okay, I'm just curious as to, how are they accommodating the students who need an elevator?
Rob, you know?
You talking about the lockers?
No, they're talking about elevators at Stafford Mills.
Stafford Mills.
The elevator apparently is functioning.
Okay.
Is antiquated and could fail at any time, so.
Oh, great.
We are, we're prepared to, you know, maintain it to get us to next summer.
Okay, and that's included in this, once those approvals and everything get taken care of, we can go ahead and move forward?
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
One last one. When it says, like, "three bids received for the upgrade of the CTE lab and the upgrading of the library," it says "three bids." The only reason I'm thinking, if we have three bids...
I think that's required.
And we ended up with $52,000 or $37,000, let's get something done.
We had three bids, I thought it meant three bids required.
Okay, that's what I was asking, it was the terminology.
I may misunderstood it.
Okay.
I'd have to look into that one specifically, yeah, and the three bids means, probably the better is three quotes. It's under $50,000, so we would be able to get three quotes to try to execute that.
Yeah, in five days, I get it.
Yeah, I'd have to check with the facilities crew to see why we weren't able to do it now. I'm sure there was another need that was holding that one up, maybe not the procurement side of it.
I was hoping you had three bids that we could maybe, you know, fund as much as we could, so, I appreciate it.
Sure.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fulmer. Any further questions? If not, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 10.07, Approval of a Contract with College Board in the Amount of $110,496 from Budgeted FY '20 Operating Funds for the Administration of the PSAT 8/9, Grades 8, 9, and PSAT/NMSQT, grades 10 and 11. All right, I think Ms. Egan got that one in first, would you like to second that?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Last action item, 10.08, Approval of an Application for FY '19, FY '20-20, Funding Under the Every Student Succeeds Act, Consolidated Titles 1, 2, 3, and 4, Parts A.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Young got that one in.
I got it in.
She, she got, she...
Oh, you did it?
Yeah.
She jumped.
Second.
This is like Jeopardy, you know, you got to hit that buzzer, you actually said it before I finished, but we'll give it to you.
No, you said four, you said four, and then you slowed, you stopped, so I just...
Yeah, well, I was reading the whole thing, Parts A, it's a lot to read in one.
Okay, we're using up all of the time we've gained.
We gained, yeah.
All right, well, all right, is that a second, Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that's the last action item we have, motion carries unanimously. Bring us to the information items. 11.01, Approval of Proposed Revisions to Policy 4107, Human Resources Services, Non-Discrimination, Equal Employment Opportunity, and Anti-Retaliation. Ms. Decatur, this is number one on the information items, I hope you recognize. You're welcome. All right, this is here for information, any discussion?
I'll, I'll open it up. As I talked about at the last meeting, I had some comments about making sure that we make a very strong statement. However, I am still not convinced that our student and personnel policies follow what we are saying on our anti-discrimination. I would propose to us that in our section of our policy manual, which is Section 1,000 of the School Board Policies, that we add a proposed policy, 1123, called Anti-Discrimination, which goes and governs everything that the Board believes in, and then it directs us, this is exactly how the Virginia School Board Association Policy Manual has this done, and then their EEO goes through all of their things. I have something I can hand out to the Board. It talks about, "The School Board of Stafford County is committed to non-discrimination on the basis of age, race, color, ancestry, sex, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion or belief, national origin, marital status, physical or mental disability, genetic information, and any other basis protected by federal, state, or local law, in employment or in its programs and activities. This commitment will guide the development of the Board's policies and practices concerning staff, students, educational programs and services, and individuals and entities with whom the Board interacts or conducts business. Then, we would identify the individuals holding the following positions have been designated to address inquiries regarding non-discrimination policies." I spent time looking on our website, you can find waste, fraud, and abuse, how to handle those. You cannot find who a complaint for discrimination would go to. I think the strongest thing, one of the strongest things that we can say is, this is our policy, but if you run into problems, here are the names, contact information. This is very similar to what was, is in the Virginia School Board Association Policy Manual. I almost copied it verbatim, but I added some additional areas, as I think I spoke about last time. I will hand this out, I think, Dr. Kizner, I gave you a copy. Let me just read why, why I'm thinking in this way. Many of us have noted that the EEO personnel procedures...
Can I have a question before you go on reading that? So, you're asking to add this as a policy in, which one, 1,000?
In the 1,000, which is the School Board section.
This is in addition to the two that are in information, 1101 and 1102, or instead of?
I would say, as a first step, as spoken by several people, this would be the pronouncement of the Board, of what we believe, and then our policies need to follow on with that policy, with a little more discussion.
So, so, so let me understand correctly, you're saying, instead of, you begin with this one, and then continue to evolve off of this one?
Correct, this is our broad statement, and let me, let me just talk through sort of what the...
Yeah, sure, I just have one more question, though.
Okay.
So, what in here is different that is needed in 1101 or 1102? Because if I remember correctly, you've asked for, to separate staff from student, and what you just mentioned in here is staff slash student, so I'm confused.
Okay, this is a policy statement of the Board that covers everybody. Then, sort of like right now, when we have policies and we have regulations, I feel like then, this is the standing statement of the School Board about discrimination. As you may see at the bottom of what I have sent to you, I think this needs to be on our Code of Conduct, I think it needs to be on our website, I think it needs to be in documents that are given to our parents on back-to-school night. People do not know, based on the comments we have received, where to go when they feel bullied. That has come out, or at least I have heard that, many, many times. So, let me just say, many of the speakers who've come before us have indicated issues with staff or bullying. This statement and policy of the Board in our School Board section affirms our commitment to non-discrimination and points those that are impacted to the places that can assist them. Oh, yeah, you can pass them out.
Not if you had something else to share, like, to share with us, that what you're reading.
No, I was just going to, these are my notes, I don't, I can't put them on the computer, because I've lost them before in the past, and then I panic when I get there. But right now, finding that assistance is difficult on our website, or even in our policies. I could find, like I said, about the waste, fraud, and abuse, I could find that on our site. Anti-discrimination isn't even mentioned on our site at all. I believe we should remedy that as soon as possible, to tell people, in what I'm sending to you, it is broken down, because I think Special Ed may have somebody different. I am embarrassed to tell you, I am not sure who I would tell people to go to immediately. I would probably give them Dr. Kizner's name, but that's probably not, he is probably not the person who should be the first one to receive a complaint, because that's what I'm told to do. But I think that our community deserves to know where they should go. I believe that our adoption of this anti-discrimination policy and the clear indication of where people who have experienced discrimination can find redress, we need to remedy before the school year starts. A rewrite, though, of the student and personnel policies without a review of the whole of our policies and our manual can result in internal inconsistency and confusion. Policies 2402, 05, 4102, 4110, the Student Code of Conduct must be reviewed and aligned, I believe, at a minimum. I have great concern with the phrase "behavior that is not unlawful may nevertheless be unacceptable for the learning environment." Not that I disagree with it, but without an employee or a School Board, as we talked about at the Governance Meeting, Code of Conduct, as discussed, we may result in inconsistent or interpretation ambiguity going forward. I also believe the Board must maintain its authority to implement and review the steps it wishes to take to implement this anti-discrimination policy across our division. I would say that any proposed formal policies related to restrooms, locker rooms, overnight field trips, sports teams, must be brought back to the Board for review. But I would say, one of the things, and why I was questioning Mr. Fulmer probably so hard on the year-end funding, was I would really consider an action item for tonight with year-end funding that may still be available. I believe that we made a promise to this community last October, that we would implement training to our staff. We have not engaged in that, and I would like to say tonight, if there is additional year-end funding, can we authorize, if it is available, the superintendent, allow him to use that money to set up that training, so that within, so that we are not a year out when we hit October, that we will not have engaged in training. So, as much as I'd like the CTE lab and those other little things, they can't be executed, and I think this is more important, I would ask the Board to consider that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hazard. Do we want to just go down the line for comments, or do you want to go, Ms. Egan?
Yeah, if you want to go down the line, that's fine.
Ms. Decatur?
I don't have any additional questions, comments, or concerns on the policy. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
We're from the north. I'm sorry, I made you laugh.
I'm from Widewater.
That's north. No, that's just a joke, pass.
Okay, Dr. Chase?
I think I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Egan?
So, I'm going to incorporate for both this one and the next one. And actually, this goes to any of the policies that we're looking at. I know that Mr. Nelson is not here. I, I know that Mr. Nelson is not here with us anymore, I assume he's.
Yeah, Lisa.
Okay, so, who's doing legal reviews of all of the stuff that we're looking at, as far as policy goes? The speaker came before and said that, you know, we, we can't exceed the authority that the, that the state gives us, that's a really good point. But are we also having anything that we pass here as a board looked at by legal counsel, even before we vote on it, to make sure that we are in compliance with, with state law and the rules and regulations of the Department of Education? So, that's the first question I want to throw out there. Second of all, when we started having this conversation a year ago, one of the things that I was kind of adamant about was getting a legal review of what we were looking at doing. Because I want to be able to look my constituents in the face and say, yes, I did my research, I knew what we had before us, and I knew what, what pitfalls there could be, what benefits that there could be. I, I can't tell my constituents anything because I don't know. So, before we have to vote on this, I would appreciate it if we could have someone, an independent legal counsel, no offense, look at this and tell me and the rest of you, what do we have ahead of us if, if any of this stuff passes? Or if it doesn't pass, or, tell us, tell us what we need to know to make an informed decision. So, that's what I'm asking you guys to support.
All right, and I received two inquiries today from constituents in the Rock Hill District, and they had some questions, which I think we can address, but some of these questions, I do think we may need to go to an outside attorney, which we should be able to do before we meet again, because we don't meet until July 16th to get some, some answers. And this, and a question that has come to me has, is, this is not what came today, but it, you know, it has been raised, you know, what is the impact on Stafford County public schools if these policies are passed as they're written? What position does it put us in after they're passed that we were not in before they were passed? Clearly, I don't think that the bullying, the discrimination, we've always said no bullying, I mean, we've had a anti-bullying policy for a long, long time, so I don't think there's any question about that. But the, the issue that has been raised is, you know, in terms of, are we putting, are we making classes protected under, that we have classes that are protected under state, federal laws, but are we adding to that at this point? And, and what is the impact on the schools? I think it's a valid question, and I would like to get, you know, a legal opinion as to the impact. You know, what, what would be the difference, you know, before it's passed and after it's passed, in terms of the, the school's responsibilities and liabilities and potential exposure? But the questions that I got today were specifically at the, the language in the, the policies, and they, they were questions, they're not criticisms or any, but one had to do with the statement, "No student shall be denied equal access to programs, activities, or services, or benefits, or be limited in the exercise of any right, privilege, or advantage." And the question had to do with privilege or advantage, and what are some examples of privileges and advantages that a student might have based on these protected classes that are listed? So, that's something, you know, I think it's a, it's a good question, and, and I would like to have the answer to that. And then, the, the other question, I think, is more internal to the board, because it had to do with the, the direction that such plan, this is the plan that the superintendent's gonna develop, shall be shared with the board for input and review. And the note was made that, you know, it's very unusual for us to, to, you know, direct a plan and then have it come back to us for input and review. So, what is the, you know, the question was, is something implied? My response would be, you can't imply anything. If you, if we want to say something, we need to state it clearly. So, if we want the plan to come back to the board, we need to state specifically, you know, what the board's role will be in that. I mean, input and review is not for approval, it's not for you making a decision. So, that's something that I think we should consider clarifying before, you know, we go forward with the policies. Because once they're passed, once a policy is passed, you don't want to have to amend it for a long time. And we say we look at our policies every five years, but if there's, if, if there's something that can be clarified to, you make things more clear, do it before rather than, than later. Then the other question that came to me was a question about whether it was, if it's illegal to discriminate based on any of the listed classifications, then why is it necessary to relist all these in our policies because we're stating or any other characteristic prohibited by state and/or federal law? So, we're saying, it, it doesn't matter, well, this is my personal opinion, is it doesn't matter if we say we don't discriminate based on the law because we have to obey the law? I mean, it's not a choice, it's not an option. But the question was, is this redundant, and, you know, what are we doing here? And I, I think the answer may be, and this is why I want to get a legal opinion, the answer may be that there are certain categories that are not protected by the law, and we may, you know, be adding protections that are not current under the law. Now, the issue was raised by a speaker tonight, that we don't have any authority to do that under the Dillon Rule, but I know, you know, other districts have done it, so I, I'm thinking that they must have had some guidance and direction, but since the question has been raised to us, I would like to get that answer, you know, from our attorney. And we go to our attorney when we have questions that come up. If, if there's any objection from the board, you know, we can discuss that now, but if there's not an objection, you know, I, I would like to have that, and we've, we've got three, three weeks, that should be enough time. I'd like to get the answers back if we can, you know, at, at least a, a week before we meet, so we can, you know, go through them and see if there's any follow-up questions. But these are, these are just some questions that are being raised to me, I think there's a lot of questions out there. I think the more clear we can be as to what we're aiming for here and what the results will be, what our expectations are, not just our expectations, but our requirements. We need to state it clearly so that there is not going to be an ambiguity, and there's not going to be any bumps in the road once we go forward.
Can I make?
Yes.
First of all, I do want to say to Ms. Hazard, whatever the board chooses, I do think you need to publicly have in different locations, so the public knows who to go to if you feel like the policy's been violated. So, I just want you to know, I, I appreciate you making that comment, and, and that, that would be considered a best practice. Second, I'm not gonna play lawyer, because I'm not a lawyer, but I think the lawyers would tell you, the Dillon Rule has nothing to do with this whole conversation. And the third thing is, I already have addressed this with your school attorney, and completely has indicated that you have every right to go above what the law, but I will get this forth to you in writing. So, I just want you to know, nothing that we have presented to you have not gone through a scrutiny of legal opinion, okay?
And I'm not suggesting we don't have a right to do it, but I just want to be clear on exactly what we're doing. What is the impact? And I, I think the best way I can look at it is, what's gonna be different before this policy is passed, and if this policy were to be passed, you know, what, what is the difference? You know, what impact does it have on the students, on the staff, and, and on the school system as well?
The teachers.
And I mean, I appreciate you talking with the attorney, and, and I, I have no doubt that there's authority, because it couldn't have been done in other places without it having been challenged, or at least it would be highly unlikely. But I, I feel that that's something that is very, very important to the community on, on both sides of the issue, and I'd, I'd like to have that. So, is that, is that, any objection from the board in getting that?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. And fortunately, we have three weeks before we meet again. All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
I, I just will leave on the table the thought about year-end funding being able to be used for training. I know that it is an, it would be an additional, we are though, at the end of the month, or no, the end of the fiscal year, that, to me, that would be a direction of saying that we would like to make those funds committed. I know that's an artful way to say it, just something to think about. I'll leave it at that.
Dr. Kizner, I know you've committed to get some of this training done prior to the start of school, I appreciate that. Do you have any concerns or, or requests? Do you feel that this would be helpful for you to get the job done prior to school start?
I appreciate that. So, right now, I will tell you, funding is not an issue for, for what we're trying to do. To give you an example, for new teacher, the new teacher professional development, we have members of our equity committee that are doing three rotating workshops. We have a system where we're working with a, you know, we're a large school system, we've got over 4,000 employees, so you gotta do this in, in tiers, okay? So, we have a system where we are training, or, so, I'm just gonna say this comment, and then, and then maybe we could, maybe this could be part of my evaluation. I'm a little confused when we use the word "training," because I'm not really sure what we're training. I think what we're saying is, what are the practices that we're going to follow? Because I'm not really sure, and I'm just being respectful, when, when I hear the word "training," it's not like we're training people in a new reading program or technology software. We've already have had conversations, there's incident that happened back in the fall, you know, we haven't had any incidents like that. Even though we do training on crisis intervention and prevention, bullying prevention, we still have those things that occur. So, it's an ongoing discussion that we have at the building levels, but something that's formalized will take place. What are the days, Jan, for the new teacher?
30th, August 1st.
August 1st, okay, so we do have a series of training, and the first group is gonna be our new staff, and then the ongoing training is gonna be, the training that we do with the administrative group on the 30th, 1st, and the 1st, will then have to go out to the buildings. But that's on things that are related to things that we talked about, basically the social, emotional part of that continuous improvement process. Again, I think our school division, like all school divisions, constantly have to remind ourselves of the best practices to identify children that are being threatened, and then also children who are threatening others, and how we help them make better decisions. So, I appreciate the offer. A superintendent saying, "No, I don't need more money," is an unusual thing, but I don't think money is, is what I'm looking at. It's, it's the logistics of getting this rotated into our buildings, and it's not just our school building, it's the bus drivers, it's, you know, custodial staff, it's, everybody needs to go through an orientation of sensitivity and cultural awareness, okay?
Okay, 11.02, approval of proposed new policy 2420, student services, nondiscrimination, equal educational opportunity. Any discussion different from what we had in 1101?
I sort of combined them, but.
Yeah, I think we pretty much. No, no further discussion, all right? Of course, that legal opinion that I wrote would apply.
For both of them.
That I wrote, that I requested, I'm not writing one on this one. Uh-uh. All right, no discussion. 1103, selection of one of the recommended names for the early childhood combined programs at the Gary Melchers complex. Now, I know we're, we're, we're gonna make a conscious effort to try not to move things to action, but we have been requested to move this to action because of the beginning of the school year, and there was a committee put together, and they've recommended a name for the Gary Melchers Early Childhood Combined Programs, and have asked us to go to action. So, Ms. Hazard, you're on that committee, do you have any thoughts?
All I, all I would say is, again, it's not something to try and hurry the board into a decision, this is something that has been talked about for a long time, and we would love to get all of our materials out, we're gonna be talking about North Star, we want to make sure that our, certainly our early childhood experience is great on every level, and it would be sort of neat to have our kind of catchy names.
No, no, we have a name for North Star. She said, "We have a North Star."
Right, but we have North Star that we are talking about, but we also have kids in both facilities, and I think it sort of is, in my opinion, a turning point for our division on our commitment to early childhood education, and it would be neat for both of them.
So, is that a motion, Ms. Hazard?
That is the motion to move this to action, second.
All right, motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Dr. Chase. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously, all right. Now, Ms. Hazard, you're on the committee, do you have another motion?
Motion to recommend, to approve the name Rising Star Early Childhood Education Center at Melchers as the new name for this facility. Second.
All right, motion second, any discussion?
Yes, I, I, I think the names are so closely, they're too similar, and I think people are going to get confused. So, I, I would support Melchers Early Childhood Education Program, it embraces the historical value of the building, it differentiates between North Star and that particular facility, and that's where I'm coming from. I think they need to be separate, they're just too close, people get confused too easily, and that's gonna, that's gonna confuse everybody. That's just my, my position.
And, and I'm just gonna go with the committee's recommendation, that they, they had one as their primary recommendation, and the other is the alternate, so that, that's where I'm coming from.
So, that wasn't a replacement motion, you were just commenting?
Yes.
Or was it a replacement?
I'm from the north, so I have no opposition to how you wanna, Melchers, I'm, I'm all good for Melchers, I'm good for Rising Star, yay.
Ms. Hazard, can you tell us what, I mean, do they feel, they felt strongly about that, or?
I may ask Ms. Massey.
A lot of people were on that committee.
Yeah.
Hi, Ms. Massey.
Ms. Massey, you won't, you won't get to see us next month if we pass this.
Good evening. There was a question about why the committee, the committee felt like having the star in both of the names would pull the programs more closely together, that people would understand that the same programs were at both sites, and that it would combine the staff into one early childhood program in the county, even though they were at two different sites. So, that's why they wanted the star in both of the names.
All right, any comments, Ms. Decatur, questions?
No, I think it's great.
All right, all in favor of the motion to approve Rising Star Early Childhood Education Center in Melchers, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those stars.
All right, back to information. 1104, award of a delivery order to Merriman, Sunny Merriman, Inc. in the amount of $957,258 from budgeted FY20 operating funds for the purchase of nine mainstream school buses. These are air-conditioned, correct?
Totally, just.
And this is with next year's money, so there is no request to move this to action.
No.
Anybody has any questions, send them to the superintendent. 11.05, approval of the renewal of a blended learning courseware subscription from Edge Genuity, Inc. in the amount of $121,150 from budgeted FY20 operating funds. This too is from FY20, so this will be back on the agenda next month, any more, any questions? No? Okay, we'll go right down this long list. 1106, approval of the single-year subscription in the amount of $116,600 using budgeted FY20 operating funds for Northwest Evaluation Association Measures of Academic Progress Mathematics Growth Assessment for all students in grades three to eight. Any questions?
Does this help us find new math teachers?
I wish you did.
No, it's for, this is for the students. 11.0.
It's a joke.
Oh, it's a joke, well, you know what, I don't joke after nine o'clock. 11.07, approval of the purchase of a single-year subscription for Dreambox Learning for all elementary and middle schools at a cost of $175,000 from budgeted FY20 operating funds. See, no questions? 11.08, authorize the board chairperson to sign the annual Virginia High School League membership and insurance applications for the 2019, 2020 school year. Questions?
Keep going.
I'm checking them off. 1109, approval of proposed revisions to regulation 4803, authorize leaves for VRS hybrid plan employees to increase. authorize leaves for VRS hybrid plan employees to increase the sick leave accrual cap. And this is what Dr. Chase mentioned, the FAB has made a recommendation for that. And that'll be coming back to us for action at the next meeting. Eleven point ten, approval of a construction contract with Train Energy Services to enter into the second phase of the two-phase energy performance contract to perform energy conservation and/or operational efficiency measures for the Stafford County Public Schools. Any questions about that one?
I don't have a, I don't have a question, but.
Eleven point eleven.
Yeah, I don't have a question, just a comment. Remember when? I, I would like to see some dashboards in the elementary schools with some flicker lights, right?
I don't know what you're talking about, but.
He does.
Send, send it to the superintendent.
Send me your dashboard audio.
All right. Eleven point eleven, approval of the purchase of Chromebooks for elementary, middle, and high school classrooms and libraries using budgeted twenty, FY twenty VPSA technology grant funds in an amount not to exceed one point one million dollars. And Chromebooks for teachers and staff, including charging and storage carts using budgeted FY twenty operating funds in an amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I just, I just have a, a comment.
Ms. Hazard?
I want to make sure that I, as a, a board member, understand the technology strategic plan a little bit better. At some point, I would, and I'm not trying to add to ours, but I couldn't explain it to a constituent who sort of asked. So it may be my inability to have read it, but I don't really understand it as well. Maybe I just need to come in. But I do think that's something that we, as a board, need to at least put some time into understanding. So it's just a, sort of a request out there, maybe because technology's not my thing. I hate when I get those questions. But I, I need the two-minute elevator speech of really what our, our long-term plan of technology is. I have a techie in my, in my district.
You have a request for an information memo?
No, not a sit-down.
We, we, yeah, so.
But I think, I think it's something that certainly, I mean, I, of course, Ms. Hazard and I share that love of paper.
Yeah. So just real quickly, we actually talked about this yesterday.
I would, I would see it as well.
No, you were, when, when the students come back in August, we'll, we'll get you an information thing. But then we would love you, we're going to, we're going to invite you to visit to see it in action.
All right. All right. Well, then we'll put that memo on hold. Eleven point twelve.
I was actually going to make a comment that they invited us for the TAC committee, right? So, so to be able to.
Really? One more?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Eleven point twelve.
I'm talking myself here.
Approval, you can chat after the meeting's over. Eleven point twelve, approval of the purchase, installation, configuration, and annual maintenance for Hunet software for use as part of the SCPS data warehouse using budgeted FY twenty operating funds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in year one and eighty thousand dollars in year two
Go ahead. Sorry.
In each year, each of two subsequent option years, subject to appropriation. All right. This is another information item. Do you have any comments, Ms. Young? No. Hearing nine, we'll just announce the upcoming meeting. The next meeting of the school board is July sixteenth at seven P.M. We're going to have a work session at six before that. We discussed that earlier. I don't need to read these other meetings, do I? They're all posted. We have several committee meetings before that. Just check the. We're done. Good night, everyone.